Welcome back, everyone. We have returned from closed session and we'll move on to the second item of the special meeting agenda, which will be a study session. I believe we have a presentation from our deputy city clerk, Martin McTaggart, on boards and commission qualification and compensation.
Good evening, members of city council. Tonight I am here to present a study session pertaining to the city's policy direction for service to boards and commissions addressing the city council's fiscal year 2023-24 priority to increase representation on the city's boards and commissions with a specific focus on considerations for qualifications and compensation for service. Starting with a broad overview, the city of San Mateo has a total of 11 advisory bodies. This is comprised of five commissions, two boards, three committees, and one subcommittee. The role of the city's advisory bodies are to increase public input and participation in city policies and programs, review and make recommendations to the city council on matters within their respective areas of responsibility as defined in the charter or municipal code. In essence, they serve as the city council's citizens advisory arm. It's important to note that the planning commission has the authority to take action in certain prescribed matters. For any members of the public who may not be familiar with the recruitment and appointment processes for the city's boards and commissions, the city clerk's office administers recruitment for vacancies. The city clerk's office utilizes an active e-newsletter subscriber base to share awareness of scheduled and unscheduled vacancies. In addition, the city clerk's office, through the city manager's office, leverages social media campaigns and also targeted outreach to community groups, as well as the assistance of serving council members and commissioners to spread awarenesses of vacancies. They designated appointment subcommittees for each respective commission. Thereafter, interviews the qualified applicants and makes a recommendation to the city council for appointment. The city is committed to integrating equity and inclusiveness into all aspects of its operations. To this end, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, or DEI, task force was tasked with developing recommendations to diversify representation on boards and commissions. As mentioned, the city council has, within its strategic plan, directed staff to explore ways to increase youth and senior representation on these bodies. At its May 2022 meeting, the DEI task force recommended providing compensation to commissioners for service while including the option to opt out of receiving compensation. The DEI task force noted the intensive time commitment for the role, as not all members of the community are able to donate their time without receiving compensation. The DEI task force did not provide a recommended dollar amount for compensation that commissioners should receive. At the October 3, 2022, city council's special meeting, staff requested direction on policy direction related to boards and commissions, including compensation, qualification, and the creation of the youth commissioner seats on the park and recreation commission. Staff received direction from the council to bring back a further study session item on policy direction for providing qualifications and compensation for service on boards and commissions. The qualifications for serving on commissions are defined in the San Mateo Charter. According to Section 6.05, members of all boards and commissions must possess the same qualifications as required by the charter for election or appointment to the council. Furthermore, Section 2.01 states that eligibility for election or appointment to the council requires being a qualified elector and a resident of the city. The qualified elector requirement restricts residents under the age of 18 and non-citizens from serving as voting members on these bodies. To remove this restriction, a charter amendment would be required, which necessitates a vote of the public. As alluded to in the previous slide, an ordinance, Ordinance 2023-1, was adopted by the city council to add two youth commissioners to the park and recreation commission as non-voting advisory members. Staff are on track to recruit for these positions and aim to return to the council in the fall with the appointment recommendations from the appointment subcommittee. To provide council and members of the public with some context on the qualifications for service to advisory bodies, on October 12, 2019, Governor Gavin Newsom signed Senate Bill 225, authorizing the appointment of California residents, regardless of citizenship, to boards and commissions in the state. This bill aimed to strengthen representation based on merits of applicants rather than their current immigration status. It's important to note that SB 225 governs the eligibility requirements for general law cities within California. However, charter cities such as Berkeley, Hayward, and Santa Monica put this to their voters to align the qualification requirements with SB 225. A quick note regarding the city of Redwood City's consideration of removing the elector requirement. In 2022, Redwood City's governance subcommittee made a recommendation to the Redwood City City Council to consider proposing a charter amendment to remove the elector requirement. Redwood City's charter provides council with the ability to adjust qualifications for service to advisory bodies other than planning, port, and library. The Redwood City City Council adopted to do this and opted not to pursue a charter amendment on this issue as other charter amendments were prioritized. Turning to the 2017 demography study, the most recent survey of the demographic composition of the city's commissions was conducted in 2017 comparing data against the census and American Community Survey information. Among its key findings, the survey revealed an underrepresentation of people of color in the city's commissions. The city council will be aware that the city clerk's office is currently undertaking efforts to update the survey and plans to return with the results of the survey in the fall of 2023. The graph on this slide shows in 2017, within the broader San Mateo community, 26.5 identified as Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin, and 9.8% of commissioners shared this identification, while 23.5% of the community identified as Asian, 19.5% of commissioners shared this identification.
Welcome back, everyone. We have returned from closed session and we'll move on to the second item of the special meeting agenda, which will be a study session. I believe we have a presentation from our deputy city clerk, Martin McTaggart, on boards and commission qualification and compensation.
Good evening, members of City Council. Tonight, I'm here to present a study session pertaining to the city's policy direction for service to boards and commissions, addressing the City Council's fiscal year 2023-24 priority to increase representation on the city's boards and commissions with a specific focus on considerations for qualifications and compensation for service. Starting with a broad overview, the city of San Mateo has a total of 11 advisory bodies. This is comprised of five commissions, two boards, three committees, and one subcommittee. The role of the committees, excuse me, the role of the city's advisory bodies are to increase public input and participation in city policies and programs, review and make recommendations to the city council on matters within their respective areas of responsibility as defined in the charter or municipal code. In essence, they serve as the city council's citizens advisory arm. It's important to note that the planning commission has the authority to take action in certain prescribed matters. For any members of the public who may not be familiar with the recruitment and appointment processes for the city's boards and commissions, the city clerk's office administers recruitment for vacancies. The city clerk's office utilizes an active e-newsletter subscriber base to share awareness of scheduled and unscheduled vacancies. In addition, the city clerk's office, through the city manager's office, leveraged social media campaigns and also targeted outreach to community groups, as well as the assistance of serving council members and commissioners to spread awarenesses of vacancies. They designated appointment subcommittees for each respective commission. Thereafter, interviews the qualified applicants and makes a recommendation to the city council for appointment. The city is committed to integrating equity and inclusiveness into all aspects of its operations. To this end, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion, or DEI, task force was tasked with developing recommendations to diversify representation on boards and commissions. As mentioned, the city council has, within its strategic plan, directed staff to explore ways to increase youth and senior representation on these bodies. At its May 2022 meeting, the DEI task force, excuse me, the DEI task force recommended providing compensation to commissioners for service while including the option to opt out of receiving compensation. The DEI task force noted the intensive time commitment for the role, as not all members of the community are able to donate their time without receiving compensation. The DEI task force did not provide a recommended dollar amount for compensation that commissioners should receive. At the October 3, 2022, City Council's special meeting, staff requested direction on policy direction related to boards and commissions, including compensation, qualification, and the creation of the youth commissioner seats on the Park and Recreation Commission. Staff received direction from the council to bring back a further study session item on policy direction for providing qualifications and compensation for service on boards and The qualifications for serving on commissions are defined in the San Mateo Charter. According to Section 6.05, members of all boards and commissions must possess the same qualifications as required by the charter for election or appointment to the council. Furthermore, Section 2.01 states that eligibility for election or appointment to the council requires being a qualified elector and a resident of the city. The qualified elector requirement restricts residents under the age of 18 and non-citizens from serving as voting members on these bodies. To remove this restriction, a charter amendment would be required, which necessitates a vote of the public. As alluded to in the previous slide, an ordinance, Ordinance 2023-1, was adopted by the city council to add two youth commissioners to the Park and Recreation Commission as non-voting advisory members. Staff are on track to recruit for these positions and aim to return to the council in the fall with the appointment recommendations from the appointment subcommittee. To provide council and members of the public with some context on the qualifications for service to advisory bodies, on October 12, 2019, Governor Gavin Newsom signed Senate Bill 225, authorizing the appointment of California residents, regardless of citizenship, to boards and commissions in the state. This bill aimed to strengthen representation based on merits of applicants rather than their current immigration status. It's important to note that SB 225 governs the eligibility requirements for general law cities within California. However, charter cities such as Berkeley, Hayward, and Santa Monica put this to their voters to align the qualification requirements with SB 225. A quick note regarding the city of Redwood City's consideration of removing the elector requirement. In 2022, Redwood City's Governance Subcommittee made a recommendation to the Redwood City City Council to consider proposing a charter amendment to remove the elector requirement. Redwood City's charter provides council with the ability to adjust qualifications for service to advisory bodies other than planning, port, and library. The Redwood City City Council adopted to do this and opted not to pursue a charter amendment on this issue, as other charter amendments were prioritized. Turning to the 2017 demography study, the most recent survey of the demographic composition of the city's commissions was conducted in 2017, comparing data against the census and American Community Survey information. Among its key findings, the survey revealed an underrepresentation of people of color in the city's commissions. The city council will be aware that the city clerk's office is currently undertaking efforts to update the survey and plans to return with the results of the survey in the fall of 2023. The graph on this slide shows, in 2017, within its broader, within the broader San Mateo community, 26.5 identified as Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin, and 9.8% of commissioners shared this identification, while 23.5% of the community identified as Asian, 19.5% of commissioners shared this identification. Also, 3% of the community identified as Black or African American, and at the time, no commissioners identified as Black or African American. Turning to Council's 2023-24 fiscal year priority to explore increasing representation of youth and seniors on city boards and commissions, the 2017 demography study showed that there was general age diversity amongst commissioners, with those who are 65 and older being the largest group at 26.8%. However, there were only 9.8% of those under the age of 34 serving on commissions. Now, returning to the recommendation provided by the DEI task force to provide compensation for service, the council may wish to note that the 2017 Commissioner demography study revealed that of those who reported their household income, approximately seven in 10 commissioners fell above the county median. The majority of those that reported their household income, 53.7% fell into the highest earning bracket. Section 6.06 of the San Mateo Charter provides that members of such boards and commissions shall receive no compensation for their services as such, but may receive reimbursement for their actual and necessary expenses authorized by the city council and incurred performance of their duties of office upon presentation of verified claims, therefore, or uniforms to be prescribed by resolution of the city council. And as mentioned, a charter amendment would be required in order to allow for compensation for boards and commissions, which would need to occur through a vote of the public. On October 3, 2022, staff presented an informal survey of city agencies within the state of California, seen within the graph on this slide, and identified over 21 agencies who stated they provided compensations for service to boards and commission appointees. At the time of this study session, it is understood that one city within San Mateo County provides compensation to, for service to boards and commissions. Planning commissioners in the city of Foster City are provided with a $269 per month compensation, represented on this slide here for comparison purposes, as a per-meeting basis of $135 per meeting, and are also eligible to participate in the city's health benefits plan. Overall, a common theme of municipal agency efforts to provide monetary compensation for services were represented in the form of a per-meeting stipend, as highlighted in yellow, the planning commissioners receiving an average of $150, and other commissions receiving an average of $70. To assist with council's direction on this policy matter, we used this survey of compensation provided with, provided to other agencies to develop an approximate budget analysis. The city's general strategy for employee compensation has been to use the median amount that other cities provide, and this analysis follows this methodology. Should a $150 per meeting stipend, per meeting for planning commission and a $70 per meeting stipend be provided to other commissions, boards, and committees, the total amount would be approximately $45,650 plus $662 for statutory taxes and Medicare, coming to an approximate total of $46,312. Council may also wish to note some additional statistics on the graph represented on this slide. Advisory bodies differ not just by scope of work, but also by frequency and the duration of meetings. This graph also indicates the number of meetings over the past year that have been canceled. Should council provide direction to update membership requirements and compensation for service to the city's commissions as an effort to enable more residents to actively participate in shaping city policy, the following direction will be needed. Number one, should a ballot measure be put to the voters on removing the elector requirement for service on the city's commissions? If yes, should the proposed ballot measure include removal of the elector requirement for all commissions, or should the elector requirement remain for specific commissions? If the elector qualification is removed, should the youth commissioner roles be reviewed? Item number two, should a ballot measure be put to the voters on providing compensation for service to the city's commissions? If yes, should the proposed ballot measure include compensation for service on all the city's commissions, or should specific commissions receive compensation? To B, if the council wishes to provide compensation for service on any of the commissions, how much compensation should be provided? To C, should the proposed ballot measure include a delegation of authority to the council to make amendments to the process for future adjustments to the compensation of commissioners? And finally, item number three, does the council have any further direction, other ways to increase representation on the city's commissions?
Thank you, Martin, for a very thorough presentation. This is the time for council questions. Who would like to begin? Deputy Nash, Mayor Nash.
Thank you very much, Deputy Clerk. If we were to vote to remove the elector requirement, would that be both the status as well as the age requirement of anyone applying for a board and commission?
Rasan, if you want to take that one?
Sure, so the elector requirement both relates to citizenship and age, so in that way, removing the elector requirement would affect both, both factors.
Okay. And would we have an option of being able to remove the status requirement, but, but not keep the age requirement?
Sure, you know, you could, you could do that. You could, it could be crafted so that only residents above the age of 18 would be eligible for service on boards and commissions, if, if that was the direction of the council.
I mean, from a, from, I'm thinking more from a voting perspective, because we have ex officio now on parks and rec, which I think is a great idea. But my question is more about if we wanted to restrict voting capabilities to people of 18 or above, we could do that.
If you wanted to restrict membership on boards and commissions of people who could...
That they could be ex officio if they were under 18, no matter what the status was, but if, to give them voting capability, to have them be 18 or above.
I think there's some language that we could, we'd have to research that, but I think there's some language that we could use to address that concern.
Can I ask, what is the concern?
Well, I just think that there, it would be a good thing for the council to discuss. There are certain issues, like if there was a complicated planning commission issue, taxation, or I don't know what it could be, that people who had, were probably still in school, may not have the experience to be able to deal with that question. I think that would be a question I would have.
Even in an advisory capacity?
No, no. An advisory capacity, I think it's very different. I would think we were just, what I was asking about was if the person had, if it was a vote on the commission, or on, let's say, on the planning commission, that that I would, I would look at differently than if it was ex officio.
I guess my, my line of questioning is to underscore the point that all of our commissions are advisory bodies, and that we, as the council, have the ultimate vote and decision-making authority.
Agree, agree, but I think we have to also say that we take the advice of all of our commissions and boards very seriously, but I know when I was on the library board, we voted on things, and I took that vote very seriously based on whether it was the budget or whatever it happened to be. And I would just ask everyone in the council that we discuss that. But ex officio, absolutely, I'm very much in favor of that.
Did you have any further questions?
No, and I'm very much in favor of removing status on all.
Who else would like to ask a question? Councilmember Hedges.
So, I think some of this would be for a city attorney. So if we decide to do this, and I'll have comments after, public comment, on how I feel about doing it, but it seems to me if we add a couple of people under, a person under 18, we'd almost have to add another person to the board, or you have an even number. So is, are you seeing it that way? I mean, our commissions now have an odd number for a reason.
So you're, I want to make sure I understand your question. So you're saying that in order to add ex officio, like a non-voting member of a...
Well, I'm talking about a voting member.
...voting members, that you would want to add one voting member and one non-voting member? I want to make...
No, no, my, my point is that if you add a voting member to each one of our commissions, you have an even number.
Yes.
So often, when we have four people here, instead of five, we don't get a decision. So, or not often, but occasionally. So I think we would run into that. So we'd have to actually, if we add an additional voting member, think about having a seven-member commission. Do you see it that way?
I think you, you would want to make sure you have an odd number of members of any board or commission to ensure that there's no tie votes. There's also language in the charter that says the number of members of boards and commissions shouldn't exceed the number of council members. So if this is something the council is interested in doing, that may affect more than one section of the charter that would need to be amended and ultimately approved by the voters.
One other thing that concerned me when I read this, if we remove the, in order to put young people on, and people who are undocumented, which I have no problem with, we have to remove the requirement they be registered voters. That opens up the possibility of felons, and I wonder if we can limit that, because there's some felonies I just couldn't see. There was one particular felony when I was in the, on the Board of Department of Cosmetology, I would never vote to give their license back, and that was pedophilia. So, and that's for a reason, of course, there, because they deal with children all the time. So I'm, I'm wondering if we can limit that to, to, if we remove that, felons who can't register to vote with serious felonies, I assume that's still the law of the state of California. You would know better than me.
I mean, that's something we could look into in terms of seeing if there is a type of screening requirement that could be instituted, we'd have to look into that.
I mean, I, I mean, I think there's some felonies we'd be wise to avoid if we're, if we're going to remove the, of felons who can't, can't vote. I think there's some provision after a period of time that some felons can, California get their, their right to vote back, and that would be fine, because those are less serious felonies. So those are my two questions, and I think the second one's especially serious.
Thank you, Martin. My first question is just to check on whether we have, whether we plan to have a separate study session to talk about expanding ex officio positions?
I think, just to frame the current study session in terms of our objectives and what we're hoping to gain from this is really looking to council for direction on kind of, is, are these things that we want to pursue, or is there, are these items we'd like to move forward with, and if so, kind of to what piece and what kind of, what is our end goal, if that is pursuing a charter amendment in 2024 or 2026? You know, how quickly and fast do we want to move in those directions? But to answer your question, the council could absolutely direct us to focus on specific components of this and come back for further consideration.
If, if council wanted to consider separate rules for applicants under the age of 18, like, for example, shorter terms, would that have to be part of a charter amendment discussion?
I think indirectly, yes. I mean, because in order to, in order to allow for individuals who are not electors, that is, that who are citizens over 18 or over, to be on a board or commission, that requires a charter amendment. And if you want to build in some flexibility for, say, the term in which that someone would serve, then, you know, we would have to look at if that could be prescribed, say, by some other mechanism other than in the charter, for example, by, by ordinance or by some other means. So we would have to look into that possibility, but it doesn't necessarily need to be encapsulated in the charter. You could provide for some flexibility, and then the council could exercise its authority by some other means, whether it's a resolution or ordinance.
Thank you. And is it safe to say, like, in staff's opinion, the intent is to keep residency as a qualification for applicants to boards and commissions?
I think I would come back to council's direction on, on what we, how we want to pursue that as it relates to diversifying our boards and commissions. I will just share, speaking with staff from Redwood City today, they had mentioned that they had expanded our eligibility for service to their boards and commissions, and in fact, opened it out to members of their unincorporated areas in San Mateo County. So, you know, that, that may be something council may wish to consider in relation to the city of San Mateo and unincorporated areas. I don't think at this point staff have a specific recommendation for the resident requirement.
I need to ask...
Okay. Thank you. And, yeah, I think those are my questions at this time.
You got a follow-up question?
Yeah, Martin, I didn't understand which commissions you said with Redwood City.
So it was the commissions other than, all other commissions in Redwood City, other than the planning commission, the port commission, and the library board.
Yeah, I think the port commission is elected, isn't it?
Yeah, I think they maintain the elector requirement.
And just to jump in here, I think then, Redwood City's port commission, which I believe is appointed, there's a state law that requires that its members be electors, so they didn't have that flexibility. So, I mean, Redwood City's charter is a little different than ours. For some of their commissions, they had more flexibility to change membership requirements. It wasn't strictly electors, but I think for other commissions, like the planning commission, there was, there, there may have been less flexibility. So, I mean, that's why they took a little bit of a divergent approach, because their charter language is different than ours.
I had a question about the, just the issue of potentially creating a commission status that would, would grant commissioners employment status in the city, and so I wanted to clarify or get some clarity in terms of, would, would a stipend automatically enlist or create new employees?
So not necessarily, but it's not like, there's not a bright line rule, or I should say, we would have to look into that further, because some cities do have small nominal stipends for members of their boards and commissions. And I think in that case, it's really, it's not a substitute for compensation, it's not a substitute for salary, it's just almost like a token payment of recognizing, in recognition of the amount of time that commissioners spend on their volunteer work for the city. But the greater the compensation becomes, the more of a gray area that becomes too, and then we would need to take a closer look on whether it would transform the volunteer status of those individuals into employees. So just depending on what the council direction was, like, consider this range, then we would look into it and come back and say, you know, this is either a concern or it's not a concern.
And so within the, the range that was presented, for example, $70 to $150 per meeting, within that range, are we confident that that would not create an employee status?
I think at, at this point, it seems unlikely that it would transform a planning commissioner or other board and commission member at the $150 or $70 per meeting level from a volunteer into an employee, but, you know, we also need to delve into that a little bit deeper to provide, to be more... to provide, uh, to be more confident of that advice.
Thank you. And I guess I had a question for my council colleagues, all of us who have served on commissions. Um, you know, I recollect that Deputy Mayor Nash, you, you attested that when you were serving on the library board, you were spending around 20 to 25 hours per week, um, doing that work. I'm curious to hear from other council members. You know, what, you know, what is your experience in terms of serving on commissions and the number of donated hours per week or per month? Who would like to start?
Uh, well, I was, uh, on the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, uh, for a number of years, and I was not assiduously keeping track of hours per week or month necessarily, but, um, we had a monthly meeting. It was fairly regular, as pointed out by Deputy Clerk. Uh, and, um, that meeting would take a number of hours. Um, and studying for the meeting, it was not terribly different from the way council members might be studying for these meetings. Um, it's just not as frequent, but I would say, you know, I think five to 10 hours to study for a meeting is not out of the question. And, uh, another, you know, three to five hours for the meeting itself on a month. Um, and then I think, you know, ideally, there might be, uh, a little more, um, to consider with regard to, uh, you know, attending events that are topically related so that, you know, within the county, so that one is continuing to gain experience and learn about the topic and be able to confidently present.
So like 20 to 25 hours per month, would you say?
Yeah, I, I don't think it would be higher than that, but I think that is a possibility for someone, uh, interested in, in diving into the topic and giving it all he or she has if the time is available.
So 20 to 25 hours per week, 20 to 25 hours per month?
The personnel board, you'd be lucky if it was 10 hours a year.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, it's one meeting generally per year. Uh, I was on it for three and a half years. We almost met twice. And when they did, we'd actually have to do studying for probably three, four hours, but neither of those materialized in the meeting. So I would say it's probably only 10 or 10, maybe 15 hours a year. It's very low. And Rich may concur.
Yeah, my experience on the personnel board was similar, but we had two cases that were pretty extensive that lasted, one of them lasted days and went for long hours. Uh, and the second one, not quite as bad, but, but did last quite a while. Uh, on Measure S, we didn't meet all the time. Uh, probably the, which is actually a function of the police department, the neighborhood watch board, uh, that was a lot more intensive. Plus, I felt it was my requirement to do organizing in the community to get people on, on block captains, which I did, spent a lot of time walking around knocking on doors. So that was a lot of hours, but quite frankly, it was my regional boards, the TA, uh, the, and statewide boards that took so much time. And, you know, I'm a light sleeper and, uh, I go to bed about between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock in the morning and I'm reading till then, and usually up at 8:00. All that's around a lot of the work I did. So it's just hard to quantify it with the city, maybe, if I averaged it out of all the meetings, maybe 10 or 15 hours a month.
Well, thank you all for your service and dedication. In my experience serving on the Parks and Rec Commission, I, I would say roughly 20 to 25 hours per month was, was pretty typical, um, depending on how meaty that the agenda items were. So I, you know, for me, that, that kind of underscores what it takes to run a city with community representation and the, the extent to which we rely on donated time, um, which is really what we're talking about and, and the privilege it is, um, it requires to, to be able to donate that time. So why don't we open it up for a public comment on this agenda item?
I have no in-person speaker slips. And if with the, um, uh, attendees on Zoom, would you please raise your hands now if you'd like to speak to this item?
No.
Sir, were you wanting to comment on this item?
Not that, something in general.
Oh, well, that'll be in the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So we have no speakers.
Okay. Let's move on to, um, discussion. Who would like to start?
Thank you, through the mayor. Um, I'll, I'll try to start by answering the questions on our screen and then explain myself a little bit. Uh, should a ballot measure be put to the voters on removing the elector requirement for service on the city's commissions? Yes. If yes, should it include removal for all commissions or specific commissions? I would recommend all commissions. If the elector is removed, should the youth commissioner roles be reviewed? Um, yes. Number two, should a ballot measure be put to the voters on providing compensation for service on the city's commissions? I, I support it. If yes, should the proposed ballot measure include compensation for service on all commissions? Uh, I, I would say yes, all commissions. Uh, if the council wishes to provide compensation for service, how much? I, I think the median approach is okay. Um, I'm not married to it, uh, partly because I think even though there, there's an, uh, an idea to sort of match this approach with how other city employees are, are compensated, uh, I think that when we look at salaries for city employees, we often have a bit better data, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, in that we are looking often at competitor cities, um, more comparable cities to us and so on, whereas like what we have right now is, is sort of just what we could find on other cities in California that are a bit disparate. Um, so I, I would be open to other suggestions from council potentially on that. But I would be okay with starting with going ahead with the median. And importantly on that, letter C, uh, I, I do believe the council should, uh, the, the measure should include a delegation of authority for council to make amendments to the process for future adjustments. Um, I might defer on question number three at this time. There might, there might be something in my comments that might hopefully, uh, answer that to some extent. I, I would just say, um, you know, I do, as I mentioned, support removing the elector requirement. Certainly, I'm personally not worried about the, about the prospect of applicants under the age of 18 applying for boards and commissions and obtaining a voting, uh, decision-making role. Um, they would be part of the application process we currently have, uh, in that council members are interviewing them. And I think, uh, if, if one were to be appointed by council after a review of other candidates, that candidate would, you know, presumably show the kind of qualities that would be necessary. And, and I think like, in effect, um, you know, inform the council members, give them confidence that this person would be able to make those types of decisions when, when needed and appropriate. Um, I, I do have, I mean, I, I personally think it would be difficult for a, uh, someone under 18 to commit to a four-year term, certainly. And we have four-year terms for a number of boards and commissions. So I happen to notice that the county has a number of commissions, um, and some of those have a two-year term for teenagers who may wish to apply. And so I, I think, uh, per the earlier discussion with the city attorney, um, I would be in support. And if we were to take next steps on this, uh, I think it would be great to look into something, uh, some sort of alternative term for younger applicants, um, as, as a possibility. Um, I am also open to possibly opening up the resident requirement as well, um, to those who live in the unincorporated area, I would say maybe specifically of San Mateo, uh, like, I guess, and by that I mean those who have San Mateo on their mailing address, um, so those who might live in the San Mateo Highlands. Um, but I, I haven't, I'll admit, I haven't really thought that through, so I'm not, uh, I, I, you know, I have some interest in that. I actually came in thinking that the resident requirement is, is not bad because, um, there would presumably be other opportunities for those who live elsewhere to, to serve. Um, I would say ideally we'd have some more data supporting that compensation would move the needle on increasing our diversity, um, especially if we are bringing it to the public for a charter amendment vote. Um, I, I don't doubt that data, such data could exist, and I feel like it's not unreasonable to connect these dots. Um, but I just think if, if council were to support going ahead with it, uh, tonight, I would ask staff to please continue research in this regard, um, between this and the next milestone we might have on this. Um, I noticed in the October meeting that, uh, Mayor Lee mentioned, uh, a county commission on the status of women, um, potentially having some supporting, uh, evidence and analysis, and I imagine there might be more. Um, and, and some of what, uh, the city of Redwood City went through last year might, might have, uh, something of, of use for us there as well. Um, I do though think that something is better than nothing when we're talking about compensation. Um, it, it may not be enough to make a difference for some, but I, it may be enough to make a difference for others. And I, I think, as the mayor described when asking people to describe, uh, the number of hours they might put in for this, um, you know, while we are not necessarily, um, making them whole on a per-hour basis with this proposal, I, I do think, uh, clearly we're, we're asking a decent amount from, from folks. And, uh, if, if, uh, if this could be the difference, um, I, I think the amount we're considering in total, um, is, is not so restrictive or onerous as to consider pursuing this. And, and I, yeah. Um, I would like to see us have another study session, um, on, uh, to continue considering options to increase, um, youth participation, um, with regard to the ex officios, I think in particular, because I, I guess I was under the impression, or in January, when we passed the ordinance for planning, sorry, for Parks and Rec, um, that, um, I, I guess my impression from either that and/or the Blue Sky Session item and the priority itself, uh, would lead to a study session in which we discussed, uh, specifically adding potentially ex officio positions to other boards and commissions. Um, so it, it sounds like we're not necessarily talking about that tonight, and if we're not, then I think we should on another occasion. Um, I also noticed that the, the current priority seems to indicate increasing opportunities for seniors, and I sort of feel like tonight doesn't really hit that either. Um, I also just want to mention that I, I think in, um, in that October meeting last year, there was a bit of discussion about, uh, exploring council member compensation. Um, I, my recollection is that this also came up during the Blue Sky Session, and I would like to, uh, see us potentially take that on, on another occasion as well. And if I need to mention that again later in the evening, I'm, I'm happy to do so and just see if there's council interest in that. But those are my comments at this time.
Thank you. Who else would like to weigh in? Councilmember Hedges, please.
Through the, through the mayor.
Yes.
If I could just, um, clarify a couple of things. Number one, this is a new movement. A lot of cities are doing it. That's why there's not specific data available yet, but we will have an opportunity of gathering that as we go through this. We're kind of, as you can see, a little bit out in front even now. Um, so that's one thing. And then I wanted to mention for the, um, looking at more youth, um, ex officio members, that direction was given at the goal setting in January or February, and, but it's for this fiscal year just starting. This other one was from the last goal setting. So Parks and Rec Commission was last year, and that's why we are where we are now. And then so this upcoming year, we'll be working at the others and we will have a study session on it.
Thank you, Patrice.
Thank you, Patrice. Councilmember
As usual, you clarify everything. Thank you. Um, so, uh, should the ballot, should a ballot measure be put to the voters on removing the elector requirement for service on the city commissions? I have no problem with that, especially if it's to allow youth to serve, uh, under 18, 18 or under. If, if yes, should this proposed ballot measure include removal of electoral requirements for all commissions, or should the electoral requirements remain for specific commissions? I'll listen to everybody else on the council, but I have no problem with all of the commissions. Um, I need to say, I think before we go any farther, that I had discussed this and listened fully on the DEI task force when I was on it. So some of my remarks are going to reflect things I heard from other people on the DEI task force. Uh, if the electoral qualification is removed, should the youth commissioner's roles be reviewed? Yes, I think so. Uh, and one of the things I brought up earlier is, uh, if we put a youth commissioner on each council or board that has the right to vote, what does that do to the balance of the commission and what does it do to the city charter regarding the city council? We'd have to work through that. Should a ballot measure be put to the voters on providing compensation for service on the city's commission? I'm going to tell you the view that I heard on the DEI and then my view. So on the DEI, we felt that many people, uh, especially people in lower-paid positions often have a second income, although it might be slight to bridge the gap, and that they felt that it would create more activity with people that have not been able to be involved in the past. I share that view, and I have no problem at all with compensation, uh, for the commissions. I think the devil's in the details, it would be how much and, and for how long. If yes, should the proposed ballot measure include compensation for service on all the city's commissions, or should specific commissions re, uh, receive compensation? Well, so, I noted in the, the, the report that we viewed today that there was a difference in compensation based on the commissions. I might, uh, have a higher rate, uh, similar to the, uh, to the, uh, planning commission for the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission. They do a lot of work as well. Um, if the council wishes to provide compensation for service on any of the commissions, how much compensation should be provided? And I think that's something we have to discuss among ourselves, but I was okay with what was in our staff report. Uh, C, should the proposed ballot measure include, uh, a delegation of authority to the council to make amendments to the process for future adjustments to compensation commissions? I say yes, because we shouldn't have to always go back to the, uh, and run a ballot measure to change that, as long as we put some restraints on what it is. And very much like our minimum wage where it's inflationary, maybe we do something like that. Um, does the council have any further direction? And yeah, I, I really am concerned about people with high-level felonies if we remove the requirement, uh, for, uh, having, uh, a registered voter on the commissions, uh, because we have to be very careful of, uh, of not only the view of our commissions, but also the safety of people. So those are my remarks.
All right. Um, if we can keep our remarks a little bit shorter, we, we do have another meeting at 7:00. Who would like to go?
I'll go.
But there's so much.
I know. I'll try to go fast. I'm not going to reread anything. I'll just answer, and then if you have questions, let me know. Uh, so for number one, I said yes to all. Um, for number two, or for B, rather, 1B, I said yes. For two, A, should a ballot measure, yes. For two B, yes. Um, and I think we just need to find some sort of a fairness number that makes it sense. I, one of the things, um, I would like to be wary of is that we don't have any, any commissioners that actually make more in compensation than the city council, uh, just because it doesn't seem like that would be appropriate. Um, and I, and I think that on some of these commissions where they meet three times, four times a month, and, you know, that, that could actually be a concern. Um, I also feel in, and actually, I'll go for three. Uh, for C, I believe the council should have some authority vested in them so that we can make those changes within, within reason. Uh, and I like what Rich said about, um, having some inflationary, uh, regulations in place. Uh, as far as three, As far as 3, I share Rich's concern about felons. So obviously, would prefer with the severity of felons, not having some being able to be able to serve. It really comes down to probably being tied to voting. If they're able to vote, then that makes them a felon that would be acceptable. As far as the youth, like to see more ex officio roles, I think we're going that direction anyways. I do think that the four-year term for students and kids in that age, I'm sorry, I shouldn't refer them as kids, but young adults in that age, my daughter Maeve is cringing at me right now on the phone, that, you know, we're hoping that these kids are going to go away to col, yeah, I did it again. These young adults are going to go away to college, and so I think maybe a two-year term might be more appropriate. The only other question, which I think we dabbled in a little bit, is if we were to provide someone with health benefits, you know, at what point does that make them, which we talked about? I'd be concerned if we made them actually a city employee, because then, at some point, they could come back to us and say, you know, I worked all these hours, and I'm not making minimum wage. And so I want to make sure we don't have any exposure there on behalf of the city. That's it. Sorry, that was as fast as I could go.
Thank you for being speedy.
I will try and do same. Yes, I believe that the electoral requirement for service should be put to the voters to be removed, but I do believe that there should be a minimum age requirement. So I guess that would be removing the status part of the electoral requirement if that were possible. But I believe very much in expanding ex officio roles for people under 18. I think the ballot measure should apply to all commissions. I've spoken about youth commissions. I think we need to add them wherever possible makes sense. Yes, I think there should be compensation for service on city commissions. Oh, and number one, I really like what Redwood City considered about expanding to unincorporated areas of Redwood City. When I lived in Emerald Hills, which was unincorporated Redwood City, I was very involved in lots of committees and considered myself a member of Redwood City. I didn't consider myself a member of unincorporated county, and I would imagine people up in the Highlands would feel the same. So I think you could get a great source of new people to get involved there. So compensation for service on all commissions. I think the median and the direction staff has proposed is a good thing to look at as we research more. We may come back, and you may recommend a refinement on that. And yes, there should be a delegation of authority to council to make amendments. And I like Councilmember Lorraine's idea of an alternative term for young adults, just given that they may not be around for four years. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think we absolutely should look at exploring council compensation adjustments as a way of trying to attract a broader diversity, because if you didn't, you looked at those statistics, it was, we're already dealing very nicely with seniors. The largest group is over 65. I mean, it's, we're already dealing with that. But I think that would be an important thing to look at, but that's a different issue, I understand. And in terms of other ideas, I would really ask staff, I know there's a great deal of promotion in the city clerk's office and social media and in newsletters and, you know, Generation Voter. What else could you do if you had a little bit of additional staff resource and a little bit of additional financial support? Is there?
I think that we, as Martin showed on the slide, we do a significant amount of outreach. The best results we get are when we're working through our sitting boards and commissioners and having them say, oh, I know somebody really good for this role. That's our best recruitment tool. We could probably advertise more in the newspaper with a, you know, quarter panel ad or something that, not in the, you know, public noticing section. We do, I think, a very good job working with city manager's office on social media outreach. We always post on our website. We generally get, the rule of thumb is at least three people for each vacant seat. And we've been pretty much hitting on that, but it's expanding, you know, the outreach to make sure that we're really reflecting the diversity in the community. And one of the things we had tried in the past was reaching out to all the faith houses in the city of San Mateo. And I don't know if we got a whole lot of response for that. As far as resources, I think we've got enough at this point in time to handle that. Maybe the advertising budget might need to go up a little bit, but we'd have to look into that. But I don't think we need any other significant resources.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Those are all my comments.
And I'll add, I've been working with a team of young people on implementation and sort of advising the clerk's office on the rollout of the youth commission recruitment. And I think that we are well on the way of creating an expanded pipeline to future commission seats, full voting seats, if the council's well and the voters' well, to change the charter. So I think that, you know, that effort will naturally open up a whole new pipeline of young leaders to contemplate actually, you know, applying and serving on commissions. So my answers to 1A are yes and yes. 1B, I feel really comfortable with expanding ex officio youth commission seats across multiple commissions, as we've talked about in the council priority session. I would strongly hesitate about creating different term lengths for different age brackets commissioners. I think that that is, could lead to some false steps and unintended consequences that would, I think, possibly derail this effort. So I, you know, I think that if we lift the electoral requirement straight away, I don't support the idea of maintaining an age restriction, then every applicant would be vetted through the standard process, and decisions would be based on merit. And also, naturally, we consider the composition of each commission with the advice of the department head and factor in the various representation across all stakeholder groups that we aim for. So I feel very comfortable with that process continuing with the electoral requirement lifted. And I think that that is a very important step to increasing equitable diversity. And so for question 2, yes. Yes to 2A. Yes to 2B. I'm comfortable with the suggested range as a baseline to start this conversation. I appreciate the consideration for CPI. I also appreciate the consideration in terms of surpassing the council's compensation, which I think would be awkward and ill-advised. And then I'm interested in further exploring and getting more information on the issue that Councilmember Hedges raised in terms of, you know, having certain felony convictions excluded. So I think that there's more to be learned in terms of how to implement that fairly. I mean, if you believe in restorative justice, if you believe in rehabilitation, then we want to do that very mindfully. But there are some hard lines that we also might want to consider. Let's see. Should the proposed ballot measure include? Yes. And I think 2C is really important as well in terms of providing flexibility. And so that's a yes for 2C. And I'll echo what I heard Councilmember Lorraine discussing, just sort of angling at, if we could close the door, please. Thank you, Rich. Then I think that there are very important related initiatives that it's hard to consider in these silos and compartmentalized discussions. And so, you know, if we're discussing multiple efforts that could require charter amendments, I think that it makes sense to consider them in a holistic way, right? Because if we're bringing this forward to the voters, then there needs to be a cohesive strategy that's viable, right? So I would hope that we could, you know, think through how to frame some of these related issues. And I support, you know, I'm interested in sort of the Redwood City's model generally, which provides long-term more flexibility that I think would be beneficial, so that we don't have to continually go through charter amendments. You know, we are required to do a charter amendment since we went through, you know, transition to district. And you only have so many words on a ballot measure. So we're looking at, you know, not a lot of page space for a lot of initiatives potentially. So I think that, you know, just being mindful about the threshold of, you know, what we can accomplish in one election cycle for charter amendments is important.
Avoid confusion.
Yes, and the challenge of confusing the voters. Prasanna, did you want to weigh in?
I just wanted to chime in, and what I'm hearing so far is, I'm not hearing support for shorter terms for those under 18, which would frankly be kind of a complicating factor anyway. And I'm not hearing support for, I'm hearing that you want to keep the current size of the commissions and instead aim at removing the electoral requirement, which should get at the citizenship and the age requirement together, and just everyone would be put vetted through the same process.
That's what I'm seeing. Is everyone else saying that, except for, I think, Deputy Mayor Nash, you are saying that you want to have an age restriction. So I think we have four votes to confirm that we're lifting the electoral requirement and keeping the commission size at five.
Okay. No, I mean, in terms of just direction to staff at this point, yes. No, I understand that. And also, in terms of the residency requirement, you know, there's been some discussion about that, whether to allow those who live in unincorporated areas to also serve?
So excluding unincorporated or including? Excluding. So where are you?
Yeah.
Okay. Exclude, exclude, include.
Include.
I would include, I would be open to including. I would like at least to consider it and look at some of the data surrounding it and allow some time for you to make your case and convince me otherwise. Okay.
Including in terms of? I think what we're saying is--
Through the mayor, yes.
Excuse me. That including unincorporated San Mateo, not just anyone from anywhere.
I appreciate, I think that that was what we were asking. Yes. So I think that probably needs more discussion, I would say, because I don't see very strong opinions on that across the board. Was there any other questions?
Madam Mayor, through the mayor, if I might. So I'm just, I guess I'd like to ask what we're going. So are we saying we will not add more ex officios for under 18, and that we'll just raise the requirement so that under 18 can apply for the commission? Because I think I'm leaning more towards the, I'd like for under 18-year-olds to be able to volunteer and, you know, not have a vote until they're 18. That's where I fall. I think, and I also think that if we do that, I think a large percentage are never going to unfortunately fulfill a four-year term, because a large percentage are going to, you know, they join at 16 or 17, they're going to go away to college. I mean, more than half the kids that go away to college. So I just, that's where I'm a little bit, just kind of concerned, I guess.
I think, so I think I'm going to answer your question, so help me if I don't. I thought that what we were seeing, or what I'm, let me represent myself, what I was saying is, I thought the council is unanimously in support of expanding to designated ex officio, so non-voting member youth seats across to multiple commissions that have not yet been determined. And that is a part of our next fiscal year strategic goal.
Okay. I'm for that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Good. Yes. Councilmember Hedges.
So I have served on at least one other commission with a youth representative who was amazing. He's actually been here and spoken in very well-spoken terms on things that he supports or doesn't support. And so, but from his vision, I don't think we can go wrong with these young people, because this is the most important arm of government for anybody who lives here. I mean, national politics doesn't nearly affect anybody's life as much as our city does.
I agree, and I concur that the youth voice and representation is imperative, especially on the allocation of resources, which are going to be impacting them and their lives for much longer, right? So I wholeheartedly agree. I did hear some, you know, sort of related discussion about the consideration of council compensation. I think, you know, this is related but not agendized to this item. You know, I am happy to bring this up under the announcements if appropriate, but I think that it would be interesting to ask the DEI Task Force to weigh in on this issue and come back to us with some feedback in terms of, you know, is there an important diversity, equity, inclusivity lens that we should be thinking about that also applies to council representation, as we've done the heavy lift to convert to districts and thinking about geographic equity, right, and geographic representation? So, you know, this, I would say that the same, you know, or very similar issues in terms of socioeconomic lack of representation exist. I'm the only person of color up here on the council. I'm the only, you know, I've, my last previous council, I was the only representative of, you know, in District 2, a historically underrepresented community. All of my former council colleagues lived in District 1. So, you know, I think that there are related issues, and I hear a council majority, and I see a council majority nodding in agreement that this is something that perhaps the DEI Task Force could also weigh in on, which, if there is interest in that, then that would also add to the suite of long, very long list now of charter amendments that we need to contemplate and package in a way that is strategic and will make sense to the voters. So we are right under the wire. Let us break. I think we do need 10 minutes, a minimum of 10 minutes. So we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene in 10 minutes. That will be, let's say, 7:08.